Tonight's meeting will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Harris, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
First, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence and honor and in memory of Mr. John Ferris, who played an important role in many lives throughout our community. Father God, we stand before you today seeking your guidance, wisdom, and understanding in the wake of the lives lost over the past couple of days. Let us pray for those that can't. Let us be strong for those that feel weak. And allow us the ability to be mindful of just how fragile and precious life is. Lord, increase our capacity to love and to let us not underrate the blessing of simply leaving our homes and getting back safely. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Paul.
President.
Mr. Harris.
President.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Ms. Twine.
Here.
Mr. Meinzler.
Here.
Mr. Wattington.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting on December 20th, 2019. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wattington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the January 13th meeting and dispense from the formal reading.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, that motion is approved. We will begin with audience participation. Please step to the podium, tell us your name and address for the record, share with us your comments and questions, keeping in mind that staff and our clerk are tracking any questions you ask, and we will provide those answers hopefully during the time that that agenda item is on the floor.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I would like to comment a couple of things on the agenda here. The streets, I got a listing here of streets to do, and we're kind of hopscotching all over the city. You do two or three blocks here, two or three blocks over here. But then when it comes to downtown project, we go east to west completely. I didn't see Perkins Ave. on this sheet. I want to know when that is scheduled. The Jackson Street Pier, Shoreline Drive. We got another 200, about $200,000 being put into this project. Brings it up to about 1.4 million so far. You know, maybe I missed something, but on the east end of Shoreline Drive, it was explained to me that that wasn't even put in the original bid. I was really shocked to hear that. And we didn't really have the money to complete that end. We had to have a nonprofit put in 50% of the money. I think that should have been bid altogether. We were under the impression, I was, that it was going to be bid altogether.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Helen Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. I wasn't going to get up, but I'm hopscotching off of what she said about the end of Shoreline Drive. I came up to City Hall and got copies of the records, several of us did, of the blueprints and stuff for Shoreline Drive and Jackson Street Pier. And the end of Shoreline Drive on the east end was in that. So I don't know how this can be, all of a sudden, it's not part of it. And I remember we had a meeting where it was discussed about blocking off the end of Shoreline Drive. And Mr. Poole said he would not vote for it if it was even a consideration to vote or to close off Shoreline Drive. So that was back in the last building. That was last year, a year and a half ago. This doesn't make sense. I thought that he had stated that this sewer and water, electric, things like that hadn't been discussed. It was all on the blueprint I have. So I don't understand why all of a sudden it's not part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Seeing no one else moving towards the podium, I will consider the audience's participation on the agenda items. Over. Next, we have a presentation on the 2019 and 2020 Housing Development and Beautification Program. Ms. Eversole, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commission President, members of the Commission. Tonight's presentation will review the 2019 residential grant programs as well as show comparisons for the previous year in review. Provided grant funding is for property owners to make exterior home repairs, substantial redevelopment to their property, and additionally, provide assistance to purchase a home within the city of Sandusky. The 2019 grant program was funded $400,000 for the program year with a carryover funding of $14,538 from the program year 2018. The 2018 funding was fully committed, but during the program year, there were several projects that were approved that were not completed. In this case, we carry over this money into the following program year. During the program year, 168 approved applications. We approved 168 applications. This consists of 22 substantial redevelopment. Those are projects that exceed $20,000. 107 exterior repairs, of which 14 included landscaping, and we approved 39 new purchases in the city of Sandusky. The actual investment into the community was $4 million in new construction and improvements, breaking that down to approximately $3.5 million committed towards substantial redevelopment and approximately $574,000 to exterior repairs and landscaping. The total of new acquisitions was approximately $3.7 million, bringing to a grand total of $7.7 million in investment. The grant awards were mapped to show out the locations of the projects. Any projects in the shaded areas were funded with the model block funding. These were the six targeted neighborhoods that are in our Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative. Over $571,000 in grant funding was committed towards projects for the year. Of this, approximately $445,000 was committed to repairs, improvements, and development. Project cost for the repairs, improvements, and developments was approximately $4 million, leveraging private dollars eight times. The Down Payment Assistance Program awarded almost $127,000 for buyers purchasing within the city. The history of the program shows significant increases from the 2016 year to the 2019 year. The last of the model block funds has been committed, so the numbers may taper off a bit unless another funding source is provided. So to compare 2016, we had 97 approved applications. 2019, we had 168. Two substantial redevelopment in '16 and 22 in '19. 60 exterior repairs versus 107 in 2019. Five landscaping versus 14 in 2019. And 30 down payment assistance in 2016 versus 39 down payment assistance awards in 2019. Of these 39 homes that were purchased in 2019, 33, or 85% of them, were first-time homebuyers. 18, or 46%, of these, were previously vacant homes. And 15, or 38%, are people that moved into the city from an outside area. The average purchase price has increased to $95,503. And to show the comparisons for down payment assistance, since the program started in '16, 39 applications is a decrease in total applications from years 2017 and '18. However, we anticipate our efforts with local realtors will help build that number back up in the future. The percentage of first-time homebuyers remained pretty steady for the last three years. Previously vacant homes has increased over the course of the years. And people moving into the city has increased from the first year, while percentages have stayed close to the same for the three years. The average purchase price again has increased about $10,000. The city approved eight grants for newly constructed homes. The photo on the left was constructed on our West End Neighborhood District. And the house on the right is a Habitat for Humanity home located within the 1st through 5th Neighborhood District. All others are basically still under construction. The applicant at 1133 Mylan Road added windows and siding to this home on the corner of Mylan Road and Finch Street. This is within our South of Kilborn Neighborhood District. And the property had existing code violations and used the program to bring the home back into compliance. The total project was in excess of $40,000. Yet looking at 2106 Campbell Street, added roof, siding, gutters, and landscape to the home with costs totaling in excess of $36,000. And last, the property at 1101 West Market Street added siding, shutters, and porch railings. And this was a total of approximately $10,000. Some of the things that we hope to do for 2020, administer the Housing Development Beautification Program, of course. Guidelines and applications will be available this coming Monday, February 3rd. Applications will be available on our website, announced on social media pages, emailed or mailed at request, or available in the City Hall lobby. Second, the city hosted a Realtor seminar in March and formed many new relationships with local realtors. We intend to expand those relationships, giving them the necessary tools to assist in marketing Sandusky. Third, we hope to encourage reutilization of our land bank inventory by educating surrounding neighbors of the available city incentives, such as the mode of own program, grant funding, and tax abatement incentives on new construction and rehabilitation. And fourth, since the expansion of the CRA, we have submitted eight preliminary tax abatement applications, with three going into effect this year for the 2019 tax year. We intend to increase these numbers by requesting notification of residential and newly added construction when plans are submitted and permitted, or permits are obtained. And last, we can plan to continue the grants through the Utilities, Health, and Safety Grant Program. These programs will be replenished to provide $200,000 for the year 2020 for repair and replacement of damaged water and sewer lines. This includes lead lines. The program began last year, and the application process begins with a scheduled line inspection through our Public Works Department. So to cover that briefly, there were 19 applications that were approved for the 2019 program year. Again, that was the first year, so words getting out on that. Three sewer line repairs received assistance totaling $7,847. 16 water line repairs received assistance totaling $25,761. The total invested for water and sewer repairs through the grant program and private funds combined was $67,215. Efforts by the Public Works Department, they implemented the following changes and outreach for the program. The percentage of sewer line repair is increasing to 75% as opposed to 50%. An exception was added to the guidelines, not limiting two properties for lead line replacement. So this means a single property owner can replace more than two lead lines per year if the line is lead-based. Outreach efforts include distribution to licensed registered plumbers and our local realtors and providing information to registered landlords, and then considering sharing grant information following major water and sewer projects. So I've talked about several programs, all in about 10 minutes. Contact information regarding the Housing Development and Beautification Program, Residential Tax Abatement and City Land Bank, is myself, Debbie Eversole. And I can be reached at 419-627-5832. And to schedule a preliminary inspection for the water and sewer lines, if you wish to use the Utilities, Health, and Safety Program, contact Elizabeth Sowicki at 419-627-5829. Thank you for allowing me your time this evening, and I can answer any questions regarding any of the programs or receive any comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wattington.
Could I get the list of the 2019, you said 33 of them, or 85% of them are first-time buyers? Could I get that list? Could you email that to me?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to look at that.
Additional questions or comments from Ms. Eversole, Commissioners?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
It's, I appreciate your report on this. It's so important that we continue this effort. And we have, we do recognize that one of the legacy issues that we have in a legacy city is we have older housing stock. A lot of it's just beautiful, but a lot of times it doesn't make sense for those individual owners to invest in that, or they don't have the resources. And this is, you know, this is the product, this is the reverse product of 40 years of neglect of our neighborhoods. And as Mr. Wattington has pointed out so often, our neighborhoods are really, at the end of the day, all that we have is the city. Oh, we have parks, and we have waterfront. All those things are nice, but we have to have good places for people to live. And to see the dollars that we're leveraging, you know, this is a, this is a process that puts us in partnership with our residents, and I'm grateful that we have this. This is not a common thing that cities have. And I think we're well ahead of the curve. This is smart government, so thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Eversole, I have a, I have two things. One's a question, one's a compliment, so I'll start with a compliment. One of the statistics that I think we can be most proud of is how you've dealt with some vacant homes. And every time that we put a person in a home that's vacant, it does a lot of things. It changes the dynamic of a neighborhood. So I'm very appreciative of that. It raises the value of the entire neighborhood, brings families into the neighborhood. Eventually, they pay taxes, they join our schools, they join our community. So I'm very thankful for that number, and I hope that number continues to improve. A question I have for you, and I've had, actually, I've had three people in the last couple of weeks reach out to me regarding the Down Payment Assistance Program. And I know that that number has somewhat fallen off, and I know our efforts are going to be to reach out to realtors and try to broadcast the fact that we're doing that. Do we run out of applicants, or do we run out of money?
We run out of money.
That's, that was my fear.
Yeah, yeah, we run out of money.
If that was a quarter million dollars, you'd have a lot more, you'd have a lot more assistance, wouldn't you?
Yeah, any amount of money would be more assistance, but yeah, for sure.
That's a, that's a good problem to have, but we'll work on that.
Yeah, it's, when we open the program, it usually takes about three to three and a half months to fully commit the money, so.
Good. Thanks for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
I know this aren't just statistics on a piece of paper. This represents a lot of hard work by you and a lot of other people.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for you.
Mr. Poole.
Just recognizing that we run out of money on the, for that assistance program, would you folks look at the other programs that we have and see if there's a reason that one program would benefit, we would benefit better from moving some money around? I start from the assumption that we're not going to have a lot more money, so we're not going to suddenly start funding the Down Payment Assistant Program. But just evaluate whether or not we might be ahead if we move some money into that program for other programs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So move.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have seven items on our consent agenda this evening, and none of them are liquor permits. Are there any of these items that you'd like, that any Commissioners would like removed and moved to the regular agenda? Mr. President, will you present those items on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is for disposal of three vehicles for the Sandusky Transit System. Item B is disposal of a truck lift for the Sandusky Transit System. Item C is to dispose of unneeded filing cabinets. Item D is the annual subscription payment for the policy manual updates and daily training bulletin services with Lexapol for the Sandusky Police Department. Item E is the annual sludge hauling payment, payments to the Erie County Sanitary Landfill for the wastewater treatment plant. Item F is a vehicle maintenance agreement with the City of Huron and another with Margarita Township. And item G is the agreement with Great White North Communications for the 2020 Dragon Boat Races.
Commissioners, having heard the items on the consent agenda, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I move to accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with section reflected in the ordinance and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the Charter, noting that item D is a first reading.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. President, we poll the Commissioners on the motion.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Wattington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Wattington?
That, those ordinances are passed. Mr. President, will you present item number one on the regular agenda?
Yes, item number one is a resolution adopting the amended rules of order for the Sandusky City Commission and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, you've heard this ordinance. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second discussion? Mr. President, we poll the Commissioner on the motion.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Wattington?
Now on the resolution, now on the ordinance?
Resolution. Mr. Poole?
On the resolution.
Okay, Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Wattington?
That resolution is passed. Mr. President, will you present item number two?
Item number two is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2020 local street resurfacing project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, you've heard this ordinance. How do you wish to proceed? Mr. Chairman. Resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wattington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second discussion?
So I think it's important to point out that there's a difference. I apologize.
Mr. Murray, go ahead.
I think it's important to point out that there is a difference between the list of the streets that are being addressed and the map that is attached. The map is more inclusive of the monies that are being spent on these individual street sections. And it may seem odd at first that we are skipping around the city, but there's a madness to that method. We had the street study done a number of years ago, and we continue to adhere to that so that we're not playing favorites. We're not paving in some of, in front of a city employee's home or a Commissioner's home or the squeaky wheel's home. We're going according to objective criteria, which is exactly how anyone would want to see our public money spent. So I think we're spending the money in the right way, and I just wanted to point that out, that there's a lot of thought that the engineering department puts into selecting these streets. And we paid for that study, and we continue to use it in an efficient way.
Mr. Chairman. I think I was wrong when we hit Tulio University Drive around cameras, remember that? And some of the streets aren't even in the community, if I recall.
That is correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Klein, can you amplify on one of the questions that Ms. Johnson asked, dealt with? We started one end in some places and finished another, and this seems hodgepodge. I know that's not so. As Commissioner Murray just indicated, we are following a study that was, that we paid a significant amount of money for. And although I can recall having a discussion with you a few years ago that it was my concept to jump all around the city. It turns out to be one of the, one of the ideas I had that was bad. And what you pointed out so eloquently, and Commissioner Murray's pointed out, is we've followed the study. And the study, it leads us all over the city. In other words, we got some bad roads all over the city. The good news is, six miles of them are going away under your program.
Mr. Three, Mr. President, this is a program that, when we sit down and look at these things, we know that we could jump on Central Avenue and do it from south to north and be done with it. But we also know that we did that, we paid that money for the condition rating analysis a few years ago. In 2015, we're hoping to redo that analysis in '21 and continue with doing the worst roads first, as Commissioner Murray put. It's something that we think is very important. I sat through a seminar several years ago. And don't take it the wrong way, but it was called Taking the Politics Out of Paving. And what the goal is, is to go from the worst to the first and making sure that you're not just playing favorites and you're not picking and choosing which streets, but you're actually going with that condition rating for every road segment throughout the city. Some of these streets, 20 to 40 years, that we haven't even touched them. Unfortunately, some of them are dead ends. You know, there might only be two to four houses. We're not looking at the maximum amount of traffic. We're not looking at those things. And as you can see on, well, actually, you probably can't see on the screen, it shows two different colors. And we're going to try to get this up online maybe tomorrow or later this week. And I see the register is typing it up as we speak, so we're trying to get this out. But what you'll see is that the purple streets are what's included as part of this program in particular. And the green streets are what we are doing as part of other projects. So you'll see McCartney on there, Olive State Route 6, Pierce Buchanan, Shoreline Drive. All of those other streets are in green, and they show up as well. What we're getting for this program this year, for the local resurfacing and picking those worst to first, we're getting six miles of road. Adding the seven and a half miles of green that you see on that map, we're getting over 13 miles of total roadway resurfaced this year. And considering that we're around 120 to 130 miles of road, we're going to be resurfacing, and most of it is in the spring, about 10% of the city, starting in a couple of months. So that's pretty exciting. It's a pretty busy time for our department. But what those green streets represent on there are the higher-volume roads, the ones that we can get grant funding for, those streets that we can do other projects and find outside funding sources. These purple streets, the one that we're doing for the local resurfacing, are ones that are usually not eligible for those kind of funding sources. So we want to make sure we hit those and move through that program from the bottom to the top.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional discussion? Commissioner Wattington.
Mr. Klein, what about around the schools, like the middle school in Ontario? And that, the sidewalks and, is that going to be ready to go? Because that's coming up fast. They're moving in on August 1st.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks and the streets. Ontario Street's going to be rebuilt. What about the area of Fifth, where the bus is going to go in and out? Texas back there. And then the middle schools? Supposed to redo that whole street?
Yes, three, Mr. President. We do have Buchanan on the list for this year. We're doing all of Buchanan with sidewalks, Pierce as well, those two blocks. Hayes was done maybe eight or nine years ago. So I believe most of the areas around the school. The one that we held off for in that area was Rockwell. But most of the areas around the intermediate school. Now in the Ontario area, Fifth Street was just redone. And I know we're working with planning to go through mobility, walkability, other improvements out there. Ontario, I, that, I do not, it's not on the list for this year. I do know that when that study was originally done, before all the construction equipment traveled that road, it was ranked a lot higher than it currently will be. So I do see on our list for '21 or '22, the top 100 So I do see on our list for '21 or '22, the top 100 from our previous resurface, or our previous ranking list, did have Ontario from fourth to third on that list as one of the next 100. So whether that falls in '21 or '22, that's something that is to be considered.
Maybe I'm missing something. I thought that street a while back, in my mind, was going to be done entirely, and then I was concerned about Fifth Street, buses going in and out the back, you know, the back end, they're going to come in from the rear of that. Is that going to be fixed? And then, so Ontario Street's not going to be done then. I'm hearing that clear. The school's going to be built new, they'll do their approaches in and out, and the streets itself's not going to be completed. Okay? I just want to have that for clarification. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. President. This is something that we are working with the schools on. We have pictures before construction, and we're working with them. We did have them come out and do some curb repairs, and had their contractor do some work. So those are things that we're looking at. If it does come down to it, and we do have some leftover funds, we'd certainly like to look at something along those lines to make sure when the schools open that they are getting that. But on the backside, that drive entrance, that's the Arthur Street Alley, that's just a driveway getting into the back of the school. We're not resurfacing or adding a roadway back there connecting Third to Fifth.
I thought about the approach area. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional discussion? Ms. Cresser, you poll the commission on the motion.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Excuse me, Mr. Klein, did you?
My apologies, I do recall there was a question about Perkins Avenue that I wanted to make sure I addressed.
Sure.
That is something that, as we move through our sewer and water line projects, we're not going to resurface and then come back a year or two later and do that. So this year, later this year, early next year, we're looking at putting out, looking to accept qualifications for Perkins for the water line, which will include that resurfacing. So whatever that timing is, as we move forward, we don't, obviously don't want to resurface, so that's why it's not included in this document. My apologies for not mentioning that earlier.
Thank you. Ms. Cresser, continue her vote on the motion.
Yes, Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr..
And now, and now on the resolution.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr..
And now, and now on the resolution.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr..
And now, and now on the resolution.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Cresser, you present item number four.
Item number four is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed asbestos abatement and demolition of 2139 Parkview Boulevard project, and declaring that this, and declare, directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, you've heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Cresser, will you poll the commission on the motion?
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Cresser, you present item number five.
Yes, item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds to Core and Main LP of Ashland, Ohio, for the purchase of materials and parts for improvements and repairs to water service infrastructure in calendar year 2020, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meizer.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. There have been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, I wonder if you would enlighten us on what we're doing with this ordinance?
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. This is not necessarily a project, it's more an ordinance that would be set up for purchasing of equipment and materials for water main repairs. In the past, if we had a water main break in the winter, or at another time, we would be able to purchase some equipment, but we couldn't exceed $10,000 because of the city's charter only allows a purchase up to that amount. So we would have to go back later, we would have to procure the parts, we'd have to defer maintenance, things like that, and it just started delaying and causing inefficiencies to repairs that were needed. So what we decided to do several years ago was to group everything together that is in our O and M budget, and this includes purchase of fire hydrants, this includes purchase of materials, this includes, one of the things that we decided to do several years ago as well, which is purchase of meters, our current water meters throughout the city are, have reached their useful life. So instead of spending, you know, a million, $2 million a year to pay somebody to change them out, we're buying them and doing segments. I believe there was a map that was attached for the section that we planned to do this year. It's the east end of the city, bound on the north and south at Cleveland Road, north of the railroad tracks. Last year, we did the first through Fifth Street area, so we're going to continue and finish off that east end of the city. And the reason for that is that typically we have to walk the entire city to read the meters, and it's very important to us to put these, what's called an M unit on it, which means then we can drive the city. So a route right now that takes us 12 hours a month to walk is going to take us somewhere in the neighborhood of one, maybe two hours at the absolute most to drive, depending on traffic and those types of things. So it improves that efficiency as well. That portion of this, $400,000, is split halfway through sewer and water. And one last item that we wanted to do this year that hasn't been in here in years past, and it's also the reason that we are increasing, or we're moving the expenditure up, we're moving the encumbrance up, like I said, we typically wait till after the O and M is passed, is that we want, we want to make sure that we comply and that we move quickly with improvements at the Sheldon, for Sheldon's Marsh for supplying water for a secondary intake to Big Island. So we have some parts, there's some work that needs to be done. Right now, we have one six-inch line that is connected from Sheldon's Marsh to Big Island, and we are going to be switching that out with four 12-inch lines. The reason we need to do that, these lines used to just be for filling the fire ponds down at NASA. Well, now, if we're going to be using this as a secondary intake, we need to increase that capacity and increase those lines. The parts for that, $30,000 for just the equipment and materials to do that, plus incidentals, we put, we increased that number to $50,000 for incidentals. Now, that work, the city staff and county staff will be working together to provide full labor to do all those improvements out there, and then, as we work through the rest of the list of things that are needed to make that a true secondary intake, so we can use that in the future, we're going to move through that list and try to come up with exactly the process and procedures to go through all those remaining items. So this total cost is $650,000, mostly out of the water funds, but a couple hundred thousand is coming out of sewer, and this will be reflected in the O and M budget as well.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, discussion? Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Waddington.
With the increase of the size from six inch to four, are we, is that still going to be gravity-fed to Sandusky from NASA? We don't have to pump it?
Through you, Mr. President, this is, that's one of the discussion points we're still having, whether it can be gravity-fed. There's thoughts out there from some of the engineers that there would be too much head loss and too much loss, and that we wouldn't be able to get the capacity that we need. So it's not all downhill, it's not sloped downhill, but most of it's below the normal water level of the bay, so there is thought that it's possible, but at the same time, getting it at the rate that's needed, under the pressure that's needed, is not, we're not 100% sure. That's one of the next steps that we need to take to make sure we can do that.
Additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
We, Mr. Poehl and I were having a discussion just before the meeting started on, we wanted to refresh our recollection on where we stood with the meters. As I understand it from your communication, Mr. Klein, and I think I have a right, so feel free to jump in if I got this wrong, but I think I want to highlight for the public that we are, we, we back up. So there's always a concern, if you're a resident or business owner, that the meter is wrong, and that it's, we're being mischarged, overcharged. And what you have explained both in these meetings before and in your communication is that it isn't the way it works. And when the meters wear out, just the basic engineering involved is such that they start to under-report the volume of water that's consumed. And you took a look at the question of whether we replace these old meters that we have throughout the city, and I don't mention, I don't recall that you mentioned the exact age, but if you had an idea, that would be, that would be helpful, a range. But you took, you took a look at whether it made sense to replace all of these, take out a loan, do all of this at once, and you concluded that the usage at the residential level is such that that doesn't really make any sense, you don't get a sufficient return on your investment. But on the commercial level, that that does in fact make sense to replace those, and you've had good success with replacing those meters. So I think you indicated that at the rate that you're anticipating, it's going to be 10 to 15 years before we replace all the, all the residential meters, but you've also concluded that it didn't make any sense to take out a loan now and replace those all in one fell swoop. Any, any thoughts on that?
Yes, through you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, I don't recall exactly when they were put in, but I do know that the useful life was 10 to 12 years, and we reached that about four years ago. So we're running on borrowed time already. But yes, when I got here, there was a, an estimate of at least $1 million per year for three years. Knowing what I know now, that was way under what we would have needed to replace all the meters in the city. So doing it in 400,000 increments allowed us to not have to take out several million dollars' worth of loans, and we're using city staff to do it as well. So it is very significant savings on our end to do it this way, and to make sure that we're getting the accurate readings, as you said. I mean, they do read low when, when they are starting to reach that useful life. So we've replaced several of the commercial ones throughout the city through this program as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Poehl. There's a question about the, how far along we are in this, this project.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, we are in our fourth year of it, and I estimate it around 10 years to replace everything. So hopefully, we can get it done within the next five or six, if we can push up the last couple of years, depending on revenues and budgets.
Additional discussion? Ms. Cresser, you poll the commission on the motion.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Cresser, you present item number five.
Six, six eight, yes. The first ordinance for number six is approving a perpetual easement granted to the city for a storm sewer on parcel number 60-00110.000, located at 1514 Edgewater Avenue, for the West Side Utility and Connectivity Improvements Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard ordinance A, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, A, under suspension of the rules in accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. There have been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Cresser, you poll the commission on the motion for ordinance A.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poehl.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Meizer.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Ordinance A passes. Ms. Cresser, you poll the commission on the motion for ordinance B.
Read it, yes.
We got several readings.
Six B is an ordinance approving a perpetual easement granted for a storm sewer on parcel number 60-00429.002, located at 3608 Venice Road, for the West Side Utility and Connectivity Improvements Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City's Charter.
Second. There been a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner, you poll the commission on the motion for ordinance B.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance B is passed. Commissioner, you read ordinance number three, number C for us, please.
Yes, this ordinance is approving a perpetual easement granted to the city for a storm sewer on parcel number 60-00429.001, located at 1508 Edgewater Avenue for the West Side Utility and Connectivity Improvements Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Murray. I move for the adoption of this ordinance, Section C, under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. There been a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner, you poll the commission on motion C.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is passed. Commissioner, you present item number seven, please.
Yes, item seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a second amendment to the agreement with Manikin Smith Group Incorporated of Mami, Ohio, for professional environmental services in conjunction with the U.S. EPA Brownfields Grant received from the United States Environmental Protection Agency, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion. Director Klein, I wonder if you can share with us what we're doing here in the Brownfields. I know we're, we're spending some money that still lies in the account, maybe some more.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, in a few years ago, when we got $200,000 for hazardous and $200,000 for petroleum investigations on properties, we didn't realize that we were going to be able to do 24 properties at least. I mean, we've gotten a lot of leverage out of this money. It's been, it's been very good to see, and EPA, U.S. EPA was very excited as well. One of the properties that we've been moving forward on is 430 East Market Street, and we're to a point where we want to do Phase Two work on it for some hydrocarbons and things like that for petroleum. So we did not have enough money in the contract for Manikin Smith Group. So what we want to do is increase their contract by $11,000. This will essentially utilize the remaining $9,000 of the grant, plus we'll just under-run the T&amp;M contract by $2,000, so we can maximize, spend the full $400,000. The completion of this is September 30th. The grant expires September 30th, 2020. And what they like to see is that all the funds are expended by then, not just that we have work underway. So we really need to get moving on this and make sure that we can proceed as quickly as possible. Plus, I know there's an opportunity out there for possibly looking for cleanup dollars if needed, so we want to do that as quickly as possible.
Additional discussion, commissioners? Commissioner, you poll the commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is passed. Commissioner, you present item number eight, please.
Yes, item number eight is an ordinance amending Part One Administrative Code Title Five Officers and Departments, Chapter 145 Employment Provisions of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in the manner and way specifically set forth herein below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. There been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Well, it looks like it's Mr. Haberger. Just an explanation, I'd just like that, like the, for the, for the public to understand what the logic is, that there's no impact on the city's general fund. I understand, but I want to, I want to hear it said, what, what it is, because raising salaries indicates that we're going to spend money at some point.
Mr. Haberger.
Through you, Commissioner President, Commissioner Poole. This ordinance of itself does not raise any, give any raises. This actually just makes sure that our tables are in compliance with the raises that we have given.
Mr. Haberger, it's my understanding, I believe that is exactly correct, because it's my understanding that this gets us in compliance with our charter. We're complying with the charter to match the salaries that we have given our non-bargaining employees.
Correct.
So it is, it really has no impact at all on, on, on the dollars going out.
Through you, Commissioner President, this is a reactive, this isn't proactive.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Okay, then I saw, I understand what's happened. It appears then that what we have done is we have given people raises that took them above the top of the scale, so you now need to add to the scale to match that. Is that what you're suggesting, that what's happening?
Through you, Commissioner President, Commissioner Poole. Yes, that's quite a common, usually, most municipalities review their pay ordinance every year and adjust the, the high-end scales. So we've gone several years without adjusting it. This isn't anything uncommon.
Mr. Haberger, I also understand that our charter dictates that we have a, a committee to approve that, and that was accomplished sometime in December by, the committee is made up of Commissioner Twine and Commissioner Murray, is that be correct?
Correct. I believe that's through our ordinances, but yes.
We were in compliance with the charter at that point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just the last comment about this. Just regardless of salaries, the, as I look at our revenues from '19, it's the, our revenues are not up, they're down, in terms of what we collected between '19 and '18. Giving raises and then saying we have to raise the money for it or raise the, I'm not sure, is a good, is a good process. Raising the salary range for particular jobs, I think should be based on whether or not we evaluated the, how much is a job paying enough. It's as simple as that. Just adding the 4% increase for cost of living, you reach a point here where, because we've not, and there's nothing been presented anywhere here that suggests that the, that we're underpaying our employees, that we couldn't draw a good employee's comparison to what other communities pay for the same, same jobs. And if this is so rampant that everyone's at the top of the scale that we've gone over, which is what, that's why I asked if we had a problem, because I would ask, I'm not sure that we have all 20-year employees in these administrative positions, and so, significant number being at the top of the scale just doesn't seem to make sense to me. So just my comments about budgeting and how we determine what people, how we pay people and how much, I'm not sure that we're in the right, right ballpark. Thank you.
Additional discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Simply point out that what, what Mr. Haberger is proposing that we do is, is to modify the bands so that it reflects what this commission has already voted. We have already, as a body, I recall unanimously, I could be mistaken, adopted the, the recommendation of the particular committee that the ordinance sets up to review annual increases in the non, non-bargaining employees. We omitted certain, we omitted the application of that to certain higher compensated employees. My recollection is it's 2.5%. I'm not 100% certain if it was 2.5%, if it was 3% or if it was 2%, but that was a vote that we took in either late December, I think it was a vote we took in late December, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
As Mr. Haberger mentioned, this is a legislative action that needs to be taken to line up with our city ordinances and charter. I'll say that this is not unusual. It happens in public administration, probably more often than it should. This is a way for us to line up with, again, what many times our bargaining unit increases through cost of living, raises, those types of things. So this is a legislative action that we take, and probably would be better for us to do this prior to it happening. So I'll just say we need to just keep an eye on that.
Additional discussion. Commissioner, you poll the commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is passed. Commissioner, you present item number nine.
Yes, item number nine is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 08-108, which provided for the city to pick up the stature, stature of totally, I can't say it, required contribution to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System for certain employees of the City of Sandusky, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I see that this ordinance was adopted in 2008, and that was when I was on the commission the first time around. I hope I've learned something in the intervening years. I hate pension pickups. I regard them as a form of dishonesty in budgeting and dishonesty, dishonesty in compensation. I don't know why, presume I voted for it, I don't know, I can't find the records online. So I'm going to say that I'm guilty of having voted in favor of that. What if we never again returned to that? That's just wrong, and I, I'm glad we're repealing it. I would note that we've not done it in a long time. So we have, that has been available to be used, but it hasn't been used, and I'm glad for that, too. Thank you, Mr. Haberger.
Mr. Murray, it's hard for me to not blame you for this.
Take the blame. I have three daughters, I'm used to it.
Further discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I think just from reading through the documents, I'd like to point out that the, the money was eliminated a couple of years ago as well, right? There's nobody currently in, no contracts.
Mr. Haberger is answering, yes.
Through you, Commissioner President, Commissioner Murray, that's correct. There, currently, there is no one that has a pension pickup.
Thank you, Mr. Haberger. Additional discussion? Commissioner, you poll the commission on the motion.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is passed. Commissioner, you present item number 10, please.
Yes, item number 10 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amendment to the agreement with Osborn Engineering of Cleveland, Ohio, for the professional design services for the Shoreline Drive Rehabilitation Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. There been a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner, you poll the commission on the motion.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is passed. Commissioner, you present item number five.
Yes, item number nine is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 08-108, which provided for the city to pick up the stature, stature of totally, I can't say it, required contribution to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System for certain employees of the City of Sandusky, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. There been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Chairman, I think your explanation on the prior ordinance will be much the same as it is on this one, but because this is a significant amount of money, $78,000, I'd ask you to, to just kind of state your, your position again, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, as you stated, much of it is the same. Obviously, there's different design issues, different construction issues on the pier. One of the big things that happened on this project, when the contractor started the design work, it was, they designed it and then went back out with the high-water levels. They didn't have enough pumping in there, so they had to completely redesign the entire underground utility package onsite. That sewer, water, electric, storm, pretty much everything that was onsite, and they had to do additional geotech. So this one was designed twice from the start, which added a lot more oversight and a lot more evaluation from the engineering firm. In addition, we've, we've looked at the photometrics on the pier, and the Customs and Border Protection Facility has really become a lot more cumbersome than what we were led to believe at the beginning of the project. So they've played a critical role in making sure that all those specs and design parameters are being met. There's a lot of stuff that the federal government requires that typically wouldn't be involved. We, we were under the impression that not everything was going to have to be incorporated, but it looks like we are going to have to incorporate much of the things that we didn't previously anticipate. And then with the architectural piece as well, the, we had a shell pavilion out there originally, and the ticket house was a little bit smaller than what we're going Sue is in the, you've probably seen her wandering around out there in a bright yellow outfit. Sue and Bonnie felt it was very important that they were here in case you guys had any questions for them as well on either of the next two items. And if you have anything for me, I'm certainly available to answer as well.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, I sent an email. I didn't get a chance to read it this afternoon. As far as, do we think this ends now, or is there going to be additional costs coming? Is that unforeseen, or is it, something could come back in two weeks or the next month?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President. As far as Osborn is concerned, I don't anticipate any additional costs for that. This takes us through May, and that's the completion date of the project right now. It's May 2nd, so we have estimated that through May, and it is a not-to-exceed, so I don't anticipate any additional costs for Osborn unless we fall into something very dramatic that needs to keep them out here longer.
Additional discussion, Commissioner? Mr. Klein, is it fair to say that, obviously, two weeks ago in this commission chamber, we approved about $1,200,000 in additional work for Shoreline Project? What we're, what we're asked to pass tonight is an ordinance to compensate our engineering team for the engineering that went into that $1,200,000 in additional work and the inspection of that work. Not, not an unusual concept and not an unusual fee. We are not in an adversarial relationship with our engineering company. They are there to protect us. We have to pay for that protection, and I don't see this as all, at all being unreasonable.
Yes, that is exactly true, Mr. President. And I would also point out, a couple of weeks ago, we also approved the inspection contract for the West End Utilities Project. And typically, when you have inspection, you estimate somewhere in the 8% to 11% range. Well, this project is just under $10 million with that approval, which means that the inspection portion of the contract would typically run in the nine to $1 million, $900,000 to $1 million range, and we are about half of that right now, just over half of that. So, we have been getting very good value, especially with the additional work that we added last week, that they've been turning things around very quickly and being very diligent in responding to us, so.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional discussion? Mr. Cresser, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
I'm staying.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
I'm staying.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is passed. Commissioner, item number 11, please.
Item number 11 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amendment to the agreement with Osborn Engineering of Cleveland, Ohio for professional design services for the Jackson Street Pier Rehabilitation Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. There have been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, I, I think your explanation on the prior ordinance will be much the same as it is on this one, but because this is a significant amount of money, $78,000, I'd ask you to, to just kind of state your, your position again, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, as you stated, much of it is the same. Obviously, there's different design issues, different construction issues on the pier. One of the big things that happened on this project, when the contractor started the design work, it was, they designed it and then went back out with the high water levels. They didn't have enough pumping in there, so they had to completely redesign the entire underground utility package onsite. That sewer, water, electric, storm, pretty much everything that was onsite, and they had to do additional geotech. So, this one was designed twice from the start, which added a lot more oversight and a lot more evaluation from the engineering firm. In addition, we've, we've looked at the photometrics on the pier, and the Customs and Border Protection Facility has really become a lot more cumbersome than what we were led to believe at the beginning of the project. So, they've played a critical role in making sure that all those specs and design parameters are being met. There's a lot of stuff that the federal government requires that typically wouldn't be involved. We, we were under the impression that not everything was going to have to be incorporated, but it looks like we are going to have to incorporate much of the things that we didn't previously anticipate. And then with the architectural piece as well, the, we had a shell pavilion out there originally, and the ticket house was a little bit smaller than what we're going with at this point. So, there were quite a bit of additional architectural evaluation that was needed for the Jackson Street Pier. And I did a, a bit of a comparison on the first one on Shoreline Drive about saving around $1 million. On this one, I estimate that we saved around $800,000 by having that oversight and having that Osborn involved with the original negotiations and the original discussions with Donleys. So, we have seen significant savings by having them onsite. So, I think it's, it's very important that with the extension of the project through May, that we get those additional hours, additional time, and being that we have four months, five months until those two projects both open, Sue's going to be extremely busy running around, keeping track of everything that's going on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman? Could I have some illumination on some of those things you talked about that were added? The size of, what they did to the, was the ticket booth and those other changes that were made, and I presume Kukocing decided this? Is that, that's what I took from what you said, they redesigned?
Through you, Mr. President. When we first started the discussions with the tenant at the ticket house, we were going to replace pretty much exactly what was there. And we are, when we started going through design, as we did with Shoreline Drive, we talked in great detail, make sure that all the needs were being met. So, what we're doing is we're going through a process, and the, we made sure that we had Osborn involved throughout that process to make sure that the original ideas, the original intent of the project was followed through to the end and that the requests were, made sense as we went through. So, I know I haven't been here, and I, I'm probably getting a little ahead of myself by mentioning those things, but we are still working through Donleys and trying to get, to pin down some numbers and trying to figure out exactly what those additional costs are for the ticket house and for the other amenities on the pier, so we can rectify those to see if we have enough money in the budget as it stands. And hopefully, sometime in February, I can come back and update you on the Jackson Street Pier, because I know I didn't do that at the last meeting. But with Customs and Border Protection as well, that's something that, with changes from the Ministry of Ontario, there's additional requests and additional ideas that they need to be able to moor the, the vessel that they plan to bring, so that they can walk it down the pier and that it's not swaying back and forth and running into the docks. So, there's quite a bit of work that was needed into making sure that their needs were met, not only from the security standpoint, but also from the safety and the integrity of their boats that they plan to bring in. I don't know if there was anything else. One other big change, our plans showed that the concrete around the exterior perimeter of the pier was four inches. Well, when we dug it up and started breaking it up, it turned out that it was reinforced, and it was eight inches. So, that was something that, obviously, our plans went from a four-inch to an eight-inch with reinforcement, and it, something that we didn't want to change. We didn't want to go away from, because it, it went from four-inch to eight-inch for a reason, and we didn't want that to cause problems, start breaking up prematurely. So, we're making sure that we went through the calculations and did the right things. So, Osborn was also involved in that process. Those are the big changes, and we're still looking through and finalizing the, the pavilion. We do intend to come back and bring those plans. I'll bring the ideas, the thoughts, and those types of things to that commission meeting in, in February, once everything's finalized on that, so.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, through you, not as much concerned about you not having accurate numbers now, is trying to make sure, I understand that these additional changes, for example, when you talked about the ticket booth, the boating folks wanted to do something, the additional cost, whatever it is that we're adding to this, is because the person, the tenant that's renting from us wanted these things done. That's what those changes were from, on that. And the, you're going to bring us whatever the final changes are on this pavilion after you've decided what they are? Who is driving those? What is, what's that about, that we're, you know, we're expecting one thing, and someone's decided they want to spend more money on something else? What's driving that? Or who?
Through you, Mr. President. And this is, these are decisions that the city's moving forward with. We're looking at, through detailed discussions with, with city staff, it's, you know, it's something that, going from a three-season pavilion to a four-season pavilion, what the cost differences are, what the changes are, what the designs are, just all of those things. So, you know, we, we have, we're, we're moving forward on the construction, obviously, right now. The building permits have been obtained, but we are, you know, those, those types of things are things that, once we get the final details, and, and with the ticket house, I know Mr. Lasko is working with the property owner for, or the tenant for an extended lease, and we're working through those details, and the E-DIC voted a couple of weeks ago. So, we're, these things are coming to you. Unfortunately, my goal was to bring it tonight, but all of those things couldn't be finalized, so I'm hoping to bring them back the next meeting, if I can get everything done by then.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, one last, last thought, just food for thought. When we approved or discussed early on, there were things on these, both these projects that the public was told, since we're paying for it, that we're going to be on there, and I would just suggest that the decision to go from a three-season pavilion to a four-season pavilion is not the staff's without coming back here. I recognize you're going to do it anyway, and you have the votes, but I'm going to say right in front, that's inappropriate. The staff wants to pitch in and pay for it. Change orders are supposed to come through this commission, and the decisions about expending that kind of money is determined by us and should not be after the fact. We're going to have to eat it now, just as, I think we paid very significant amount of money for a study of the concrete around that pier at the very beginning, and so finding out after the fact, it's 4 to 8, and not whatever it is, whoever did that study suggested, and then asking us to pay for it at the last, after, way at the late, this late hour with no introduction to the concept, is, I think it's inappropriate. Thank you.
Additional discussion, Commissioners?
Let me pause on that point, Mr. Chairman. Pause on that point, because the, the issue raised is an important one, but I think that the answer is that, given the very nature of the design-build contract that we let out for the Jackson Street Pier, that these types of decisions were inherent, inherent in the process, and they were inherently going to be left to staff to determine what they thought was the best route and bring that recommendation back to staff, and I think that's exactly what Mr. Klein is doing.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Cresser, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda items, and we'll turn to our city manager for your conclusions.
Thank you, Commission President Brady, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with the donations first, a thank you to Construction Equipment and Supply for donating the use of a lift with $650 to the Division of Facilities and Properties for the purpose of removing downtown holiday decor. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second. A motion, a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved in hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Thank you. Moving on to police, they'll be shaking things up this month as Live Aloha 125 West Market Street will host the Shake Smoothie Coffee with a Cop program on January 29th from 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. No agendas or speeches, just an opportunity to come, ask questions, or voice, voice any concerns, and to meet local police officers. Also, an original appointment, testing through the National Testing Network begins January 15th, 2020, and runs through March 1st, 2020 for full-time candidates. Information can be found on the city website or through NTN. Also, please contact Victoria Schaefer at 419-627-5885 with any questions. Moving on to public works, with cold weather now affecting the region, financial assistance programs are available for Ohio Edison customers who need help with winter heating bills. For further info, residents are encouraged to call 1-800-282-0880, or to visit www.development.ohio.gov. Also, a welcome to Rick Cheney, who has joined the Division of Sewer Maintenance as a full-time employee. And an update that the contractors for both McCartney Road and the Chaussee Water Tower demolition have both mobilized. Staying with public works, an update on Sandusky Bay, the Corps of Engineers issued a report towards the end of 2019, stating that Lake Erie's water level is expected to decrease slightly in February before starting its normal seasonal rise. It is expected to remain above 2019 levels into April, but then recede through May, two levels below May of 19. Of course, this will depend on snow mountain rain events throughout the region, including Canada. Last year, sewer maintenance discovered quite a bit about the system purchased equipment to properly respond to flooding along First, Farwell, and Antucket. Also, crews will repair an outfall pipe and backflow valve this winter near F Street that can be used for that area, and hopefully, the McCartney Road project will help with the inundated outfall over there. Finally, staff will be evaluating options for long-term capital improvements that can be implemented when the bay level lowers to normal elevations. Moving on to community development, the next economic development set-up committee is set for 1:30 on Tuesday, February 11th, in Chambers. And with the planning department, an update that 2020 downtown residential parking permits are now able to be renewed or applied for. 2019 permits will be accepted until the end of January 2020. An RFQ has been released for a citywide mobility plan. The plan will analyze Sandusky's existing transportation infrastructure and make recommendations on strategic improvements and investment for all modes of transportation, including pedestrians, automobiles, transit, rail, passenger buses, and ferries. The city intends to submit an application for a certified local government grant through the State Historic Preservation Office to fund an update to the Sandusky Preservation Design Guidelines. Also, Sandusky Transit implemented new changes made possible from the 2020 ODAC grant cycle. STS is now running a BGSU Firelands Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and the red line now operates on Sunday, and the blue line has pickups every 30 minutes, and yellow and blue red lines run from 5:00 a.m. to 12:30 a.m. All new STS route information is updated on Google Maps, making it easy to plan routes and find times for bus stop locations, and new STS brochures have to be circulated, or started to be circulated around the community and on the buses. Staff is currently beginning the Community Development Block Grant Annual Auction Plan for 2020. Subrecipients, applications to apply for CDBG funding will be available starting on February 14th. And then an update on meetings, the regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 26th at 4:30 in Chambers. The regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February 20th at 4:30 p.m. in Chambers. The Landmark Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 19th at 4:30 p.m. in Chambers. And finally, the Regular Arts and Culture Commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 18th at 5:15 p.m. in Chambers. And then finally, for recreation, the Sandusky Rec Department would like to thank the following partners for making the 2020 coming into focus, Winter Break Camp at Sandusky High School and overwhelming success, Sandusky City Schools, Sandusky Fire and Police, Sandusky Junior Sailors, Susan Schickley of OSU Extension, Tiffany Rofu, Constance Moore, Brandy Moore, Paul Sherwood, Stephanie Brown Mayfield, Angela and Andrea Warren, Ogo, Five Star Entertainment DJ Jimmy Rock, Prodigal Sun, The Party Center, which blew up over 300 balloons, and many parents. We'd also like to thank Pizza House East, Berardi's Family Kitchen, Salvation Army Lee's Famous Recipe Chicken for providing lunch for the four-day camp. Plans are in the work for Sandusky Spring Break Camp at Sandusky High on April 6th or April 9th. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for the city manager? I group, telling you, Mr. Murray? We will move to old business, items of old business. Commissioners, anyone have items of old business?
I have an item of old business. I would like to share with you my selection of the three city residents to serve on the police selection committee. They are Edward Window, lifelong city resident, longtime business owner, and a downtown investor. Mark Fogg, longtime city resident, actively involved in our church and its church, and in our community, and we, most of us know him as the voice of WLEC. Dr. Stephen Sturgill, who serves as the chief of staff of Sandusky City Schools, and transfer, and he's also the transformation officer. These three individuals have, have agreed to serve in this capacity. Included as a member of this committee is Vincent Rhodes, who acts as the chairman of our Civil Service Commission. I've asked Commissioner Twine to be my representative and serve as the chairperson of the committee. I believe the city manager's office has begun the process of notifying individuals who are qualified for this position in accordance with, with our charter, and you've hopefully begun the application process. I'd ask for a motion to accept my resident selections for this committee.
So moved.
Second. A motion, a second. Mr. Cresser, will you pull the commission on the motion?
We get to discuss.
Oh, excuse me, discuss, yes.
I'm glad that you appointed Commissioner Twine to chair that. It's going to be a lot better than if you held the position yourself.
I've done that before, haven't I? You're so complimentary.
I'm getting used to my new role.
Additional discussion? Not barbs, but discussion. I, I think that Mr. Heiburger prefers that we vote on these individually, or can we vote on them collectively?
I think the motion was by slate. I interpreted that motion was by slate, and that's why I interpreted.
Perfect. Mr. Cresser, you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That motion is passed, and we have our police selection committee in place. Next is any other items of old business? If not, any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
When Mr. Murray spoke about command, design build momentarily ago, I listened to that, and I just want to read this to, to the commission for, for the future. "When it becomes necessary in the opinion of the city manager and the prosecution of any work or improvements under contract, to make alterations or modifications in such contract, such alterations or modifications, if made, shall be of no effect until the price to be paid for the work and material both under altered or modified contract has been agreed upon in writing and signed by the contractor, by the city manager, and approved by the city commission." Now, that's the point I was making earlier. Sometimes it's practical that things get done, small things get done on the fly, and we approve them later. The principle of spending large amounts of money without going back to the commission is not in keeping with the charter. That's Section 40, modification of the charter, modifications of contracts. So, design build is something that we invented two years ago in terms of how it applies to what our charter says we're supposed to do to get work done. And so, moving forward, I've recognized that we have six commissioners that'll just say, okay, we're going to do this, but I'm not, but I just want to recognize that I haven't lost my mind, and I do believe in the long run that the charter was written to provide, maybe it takes a little longer, but provide the, the best chance for the community to get the best use of their money on projects, and, and that applies to this entire, when it's inconvenient, I'm not in favor of ignoring what the charter says to do. So, but that's, I just want to add, this is my last thoughts on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Poole. Any additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Poole, I don't think you've lost your mind, but I, and, and with, with great respect, I, I simply disagree, but I will follow up with the law director to make sure that those apparently conflicting conflicts are reconciled, and I believe by our legislation, we have done exactly that, but I'll follow up. Thank you for pointing the issue out.
Any additional items of, of new business, Commissioners? We will move to audience participation on any item. Please step to the podium, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts, so we can get home to dinner to reason why we're going to ask you to limit your remarks to five minutes. to five minutes.
So you won't come to this.
Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. I saw in the paper where we've got another art project. This was presented in the park last year. My concern is a lot of lights, talking about a lot of lighting artwork and artwork that's has to be lit, things like this. The pictures that are being passed out are from Toledo. I copied them today, they're identical to the one I have, I didn't darken them. Toledo darkens their lights for the problem with bird migrate, migrating through the area and running into anything that's lit. And these blue lights, the LED lights shine outward more, and they attract the birds more, and it keeps them in the area longer also, but they have trouble getting themselves over the lake for some reason. It's their problem, but we seem to create it. And I was wondering if there's anything, I know you guys got your hair set on all these things that are all lit up, because the paper says this could be a piece of art that could be in Sandusky somewhere. Well, you've already decided on it. You knew that when you put it, displayed them in the park last year. But I was just wondering if there's any way we can do less lighting, and maybe in the wintertime, when there's less migrating of the birds, we can do something downtown that really brings people into town to see the lighting in town. The streets lit differently, more decorations. The park has been the same for several years. It's time to beef it up, maybe around the courthouse, maybe have a map where you go from this park to this park to this park, and they have different things in the different neighborhoods. But, and that would bring people into town, and then they would come out, and they walk around, and they eat at the restaurants. This is a problem with the birds. All along the coast, when you see the state of Ohio at night, you can see that all along the coast is New York, and Cleveland, and Buffalo, and all the way up into Detroit, they have to light their casinos. I just wondered if there was something that could be done that would address this issue. The Myo Marker Zero, how high is this wall going to be? The picture shows some invisible people sitting on it, but is this going to be a three-foot wall? Is it going to be blocking the view of the water? I know if you peek up, and if you drive a pickup truck, you'll be able to see the water, but a lot of people don't. I know a lot of people do, which also begs to the east end of Shoreline Drive, if you've pinched that up to 10-foot wide lanes, that's the width of a parking space, and the diameter, the radius that a Volkswagen bug needs to turn that corner is a whole lot different than a double cab pickup truck. They need a wider radius, and if there's someone sitting at that intersection, they're going to be in their way, and there's going to be people driving over the curbs, which is, I would think you wouldn't want that, but that doesn't seem to be the situation downtown. The pavilion, this is really getting good with this pavilion. It started out as a marketplace, where the market could be out there, and now it's turned into a three-season pavilion. Now it's turned into a four-season pavilion, and pretty soon it's going to be, look, somebody can put a restaurant in there, wouldn't that be nice? When initially, I don't know who put this pavilion thing out, because initially, when Mr. Pesta brought it to the public meetings, everyone said, no, they didn't want a pavilion on the pier. And if Mr. Waddington doesn't think that blocks the view of the water, I don't know what he's looking at. When you're driving down the pier, you already cannot see the water because of that pavilion and that four-and-a-half-foot-tall pile of dirt at the other end. It's, you can walk down there and you can see the lake, but Mr. Murray and Murray's building blocks the view of the water too, unless you walk around behind it. And I don't think he wants a bunch of people walking around behind his building to see the lake. That's none of their business. Oh, wait, 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 wait. You were talking about the crosswalks, and the big O is going to be stamped concrete, I'm assuming? Is it going to be dyed concrete or painted when it's stamped? Because in Amherst, they painted theirs, and it's all coming off, and it looks bad. So the dyed concrete would make more, I know it's cost more, but it would make more sense and it would last longer, I would think. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. No one else moving to the podium? In that case, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.